Yeah, Village of Bartlett Committee of the Hole Meeting for January 5th, 2016. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
You see, Herons? Here.
Here.
Harbinero?
Here.
Rennie?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
Couple items on our Committee of the Hole Agenda this evening. The first one's under Planning and Zoning. Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have only one item this evening, the Blue Heron Business Park Third Amended Annexation and Revised PUD Plan. Staff is looking for our further input on this, and with that, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thank you, Trustee Ranky. This is coming back to you after it had gone to the Plan Commission for the required public hearing on the PUD amendments. Essentially, it's the same project, Blue Heron Business Park, at the northeast corner of West Bartlett Road and Route 59. The developer, Abbott Land and Development, represented by Dean Kelly, who is here tonight, is asking to amend his annexation agreement for essentially the purposes of reducing the width of his buffer that buffers the property from on the east from the state Herons Woods rookery or Herons nesting area. The petitioner had originally had a development PUD amendment, and this one probably shows the best, but as you can see, the buffer on the east side is variable width, and generally it was that way due to protecting the herons that were nesting in this area. They've hired an ecological engineering firm, Hay and Associates, who provided information that the herons don't need that kind of big buffer, and that they do have found eagles on the property, and they have, they will subscribe to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service information and regulations regarding the construction during the eagle nesting, which occurs in the spring primarily. What they would like to do also, in addition to the annexation agreement, is amend the PUD plans. For the preliminary PUD, going with the uniform buffer on the east side, and the pre-approved site plan, again, it's being the variable buffer going to the uniform buffer of 50 feet. They also went to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission recommended approval, subject to the conditions and findings of fact that are in your report. Are there any questions? Dean is here, or I'll try to answer them.
This isn't a TIF district, correct?
This is a TIF district, correct.
So, is this similar to Brewster Creek, as we pay for all the site development, or all the site grading and things of that nature?
Generally, yes. The developer has developer notes, and he's using mainly primarily for land reclamation and for infrastructure installation.
So, will this increase or decrease the cost?
For him, in terms of development of the buffer area, probably decrease the cost of that buffer development, because that, the original one had a berm and trees, and this is more of a graded area with native species plantings in that buffer zone. And obviously, the width narrows the amount that you have to develop.
Will it cost the TIF district more money? Will we have more of a payout to Abbott Land?
I'll let Dean answer that. He can probably fill in. He's more familiar with the actual reclamation cost on this.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, the answer, so we pay for all the costs associated with the development of the property, including the reclamation. Comes out of our pocket. We issue notes, as Jim mentioned, and then, when increment is, you know, generated, then it pays those notes back. So, as far as reclamation, really doesn't make, that doesn't make a difference, you know, maybe slightly because the berm is no longer there, and then, a few less trees, but it's pretty nominal impact as far as the TIF itself.
If at some point you guys do have kind of some numbers, I'd just like to see them. That's all.
We can, our TIF budget basically is, as Dean said, he's paying the notes on this, and he's taken out a few. I'm not sure where you're at in terms of dollar amounts of taking out, but...
Yeah, we have spent quite a bit more than we've received in increment, just because we haven't had the development activity. Now, we're starting. We have a building that's just about complete. We have another one that's on the books that'll start this year, and a couple other projects. So, we're way ahead of the game as far as costs spent versus revenues taken in.
Just, just one more. You'll see the TIF budget as we go through our budget process for this, and it'll reflect what Dean's saying.
Thank you, Jim.
Any other questions? Thanks for being here tonight, Dean.
Thank you.
Is there only one eagle's nest on the property, or they're similar? Sorry about that.
That's okay. No, there was one last year, and I don't know if they'll come back or not, but we had to agree to a buffer temporarily. We could not do reclamation activities within a certain radius, I think it was 600 feet, while the eagle is there. And we can comply with that. We did last year, and there's a little bit left to do. It doesn't impact the project that's, that we're currently negotiating, so that shouldn't impact us. And once a tenant is in or a user, then they can operate freely, you know, regardless of whether a nest is there or not. But we don't know if they'll be back or not.
It'd be pretty unlikely the IDNR would ever sell off that property, don't you think? I mean...
Yeah, I don't know how they would. Yeah, it's about 300 acres. And it would...
I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
I said, it would be pretty unlikely that the IDNR would sell off that property adjoining their, their property, just making a statement.
Yeah, I don't think they normally do that. It would be expensive to develop that.
Okay.
So, assuming Chairman Ranky, we want to forward this to Village Board for public hearing on the third amended annexation agreement. And a vote next, next time?
Sounds good.
Very good.
Okay, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item on our Committee of the Hole this evening is under Public Works, the water study. Chairman Camer.
Thank you, Mr. President. On November 17th, 2015, Dr. Christopher Burke presented three options for the future water supply for the Village Board to consider. Hundred percent Elgin, hundred percent Jawa, fifty percent Elgin, fifty percent Jawa. There was discussion on the pros and cons of each option, and many questions asked by the Board. So, we've included the water study presentation with some additional information that was requested, and will be available to answer questions that you may have. And I think at this point, we turn it over to Dr. Burke.
Thank you. I'll go through the first few slides. Most of this is a repeat of what we talked about before. Remember, in the summer and the fall of 2014, we made presentations. We looked at a number of options. We've called down some of those options today, and we've given, you guys gave us direction. We entered into a negotiation with Elgin, or discussions with Elgin, and we determined that some of the things that we thought were frozen were not frozen. And so, in the meantime, Jawa came back to us, if you remember, and offered a source of water, reducing the buy-in fee and making it more cost-effective than the rates that we provided to you. So, in this particular case, the projection for Jawa went down by approximately $2.40 per thousand gallons. They also submitted to us the concept of a 50/50, whereby we'd get half of it from Elgin and half of it from Jawa. The reason why that's important is that we only have to, we could use the existing connection with Elgin, and we'd only have to construct one new Jawa connection versus two Jawa connections if we used all 100 percent Jawa. So, there were some strong points to consider, and that's why we presented to you. At that same time, Elgin said to us, we are not going to drop the multiplier down as much as we told you we were, and as a result of the not freezing the cost, the accelerate, the increase to two and a half percent, but to whatever it's been historically, or whatever they pass on to the residents, Elgin, that wound up raising the 100 percent Elgin cost because of the fact that they viewed the, that particular option that we presented as more favorable to Bartlett than Elgin. So, that wound up increasing the cost for 100 percent Elgin water by 90 cents per thousand gallons. So, this is graphically what Elgin has agreed to, which is different than the original presentations we made about a year and a half ago. So, this is graphically, so we, at one time, were looking at a surcharge, excuse me, a surcharge multiplier that would go almost to one as the volume and the daily flow rate increased. Based on their current approach, it will, after we get to 2.75 million gallons, which would be from that existing connection, increasing the pumping rate, we would get a reduced multiplier, but that would never go below a 15 percent bump. And what that means is, they charge their customers a rate, and you're paying 15 percent beyond what they're charging their customers. And right now, as a refresher, you're doing 1.25 times their rate that they charge their customers. So, what we did is, we kind of simplified this and identified the three options. 100 percent Elgin, which is Elgin's providing you all the water, either eventually through two connections to their system. 100 percent Jawa, which is two connections to the Jawa system, or a 50/50, which is the using one connection to each one of those systems. And you can see the, the range in the projected values, and this is in $2,019. Now, we footnoted on the last page all of our assumptions, and not to do anything but illustrate how we got to these numbers, so anybody can duplicate these, and all the assumptions, the assumptions on the cost of money, the assumptions on the annual increase in staff and operations and maintenance of your facilities, as an example. So, this is a, that's why we have a range, and this is different than what we presented in 2014, because Elgin raised their prices and Jawa decreased their prices. And the 50 percent, 50/50, and it's roughly 50/50. It may be impossible to ever get exactly one-half because of the way the systems, but that's the way that we calculated at this point in time. The pros and cons, we've talked a lot about this before. I want to highlight two things. One is the capital improvement costs are identified there, and that would have to be done in the 100 percent, and in all these cases here, you would have to make all these changes before 2019. You'd have to incur these costs to make these improvements before 2019. The sources of water, you have one for the 100 percent Elgin. It's 100 percent Fox River. 100 percent Jawa is Lake Michigan. Obviously, the blended or 50/50 is a combination of the two. That provides some source redundancy, and I point that out because we, we believe both are good sources of water today, and, and as far as we can see in the future, and others can see in the future, will be reliable sources. But having two independent sources does provide the village with more certainty as you move forward. I point that out. And all these options are soft water, and I'll talk briefly about that, because that's one of the questions that we had from last time. We projected what the cost would be for all of these different options, for on the left-hand side, different types of users, different categories, 6, 8, and 10,000 gallons per month, respectively, and for the three options. And you, this would be the increase above existing conditions. I also want to point out, and we know that a lot of residents, I know this anecdotally, I can't tell you firm numbers, but you have residents that currently have water softeners in their home. And when you go with any of these options, or even the phased-in option that I'll talk about in the second, that would no longer be necessary. So, the residents would be, we know that DuPage County uses about $16 a month as the number. We heard that one of your staff members recently put one in, and it's costing $20 a month. So, those costs, there'll be increased costs that may be offset if individuals have water softeners that they abandoned. Now, it's not going to be 100 percent of the people are going to abandon their water softeners, and not 100 percent of the people have it. So, I just point that out, because when you look at these increases, it may be offset because of the type of water versus the water softeners they have today. So, we footnote this all in here, and identify that, just so you have, you know, this is stuff DuPage County just included in some cost estimates that they're looking at, when they're looking at taking over different systems.
I don't have to go searching for those yellow bags of salt pellets anymore? Is that what you're telling me?
You wouldn't with the, those three options.
Nice. You can have a water softening burning, burning party or something.
Well, yeah, you would definitely have diminished need for those pellets, and the electricity, and the, all the other things that the rentals associated with those units would not be necessary, because the three alternatives I just showed, all are treated. Now, what we also did, because we talked a lot about the phased-in approach, the phased-in where you go in, you immediately upgrade that one connection to Elgin, so you're going to get more water out of that, and you're going to use your existing wells. And you have a number of wells. We've made the presentation before, and you can get away with, on an average day, running three of the wells, and having the other ones in reserve. Because as much as we want to think that the last few years have been nice and wet, and we haven't needed to water lawns or do things, we will have some droughts where we will have surges in the water, and what we know is, it's about two, it can be, as in the past, you've had 2.2 times your average day. So, you need to keep some of the wells in reserve and operational. You can't phase all of them out, but there were three that would primarily provide you day-to-day service. So, what we did is, we took a look at what you could do over a 10-year period. If you just looked at, phased out the wells over 10 years, you would have 5.7 million in capital improvements. But if you wanted to increase the softening level, that jumps up it by another, brings it up to $11.2 million. So, water softening's more expensive. If you wanted to use that, phase out your wells over time, you would have to incur about $12.8 million in capital improvements beyond 2019. So, what we, we identified the different alternatives. There are some notes here that are worth talking about. This alternative defers that second connection. You don't have to build it. You build it over time, but by 2026, you need to have that built. Your softener capital cost in wells four, six, and seven is about 5.5 million. Those are the three that will provide you daily water, water from your wells if you keep this phased-in approach. And so, what you do is, you save money, because right now, no one's charging you for the water you extract. That water's free. You've got to retreat it, you've got to distribute it, but right now, if you, when you go to these other sources, you're going to have to pay for the commodity that others are producing, just like if someone is taking your, you sell your water that you produce to your residents. So, so this table gives a more detailed analysis of what needs to be done. I want to point out that, that these are the three wells, again, that would have to be used every, every day to meet the average demand. All right, so now, we were asked to really take a lot of assumptions into play and look at what the rates would be in the year 2026. And you can, you can all appreciate that if we had to, there's, there's a lot of extrapolations. We use the same in all of them to normalize them, but still, there's some assumptions. There's, you know, what the inflation is going to be, what, that you don't have any catastrophic capital equipment replacements. When you take a look at it, in 2026, there's not a huge spread between the three, the various options that we've talked about. Let me go back here. Sorry. The 100 percent Elgin, 100 percent Jawa, the 50/50 option, or the, the two that we talked about, which is with and without softener. The projected rates are all within the, you know, the range comparable, once, when you consider the, the extrapolation that's necessary to bring it out 10 years from today. So, that, you know, that's something that you should, you know, you can consider, that they're very comparable as you move forward. I've already talked about several times the capital cost that you have to incur, and the payment of those is included in these estimates here. As I said, these are not, these are just explanations we've had, because during this process, we had people from Jawa looking at our numbers, making sure that we were properly representing their costs, and people from Elgin, consultants from Elgin, and we point that out. So, we've, these have been, because you've posted them, this has been a, everything that you guys have talked about has been posted, every one of our presentations, so everybody knows what we've assumed, and the results were that, there was very comparable in the estimates that, that we provided. So, that's the update. I think we've, I, we tried to answer the questions that you guys raised last time about utility of the wells, and what you could do and what you couldn't do, so.
All right. So, I think tonight, we're looking to give the staff some direction, right?
Yes.
And that being said, would we make a decision to vote on one of these options tonight? What we're looking for?
Well, it's committee, so you're, you know, giving direction. It's not a formal vote.
I think we...
From that, we would go negotiate with one or both, or, and then, ultimately, you would vote on an agreement, but we're looking for direction.
So, how do we come up with a direction as a consensus? Should I all vote? Ask questions? Call the board? Whatever.
Consensus, and there's no use if we're, I mean, the Board's consensus would be 100 percent Elgin. There's no use for them to waste their time with the Jawa contract.
Yeah, absolutely. So... If you're looking for comments, if it's what we're here to do now, I certainly am impressed with the 50/50 program, and I think it gives us many variable options, and I think it's, for the most part, pretty cost-effective as well, so that's...
One of the questions I did have, Dr. Burke, is, what are these folks that paid all the buy-ins for Jawa, what's their reaction to, I mean, obviously, they had to vote on it, but are they going to try to, at some point, recuperate their costs on the backs of folks that are getting in for free, or?
They actually are delighted to have us.
I know, because they've done the numbers, and more water is going to mean...
And, well, and we save them money, because right now, their overall amount that they're supposed to take is down. So, if we come in and fill the gap, then we save them money by coming in. So, I, I think that we would be welcomed.
And I think that would be part of the agreement that would be negotiated, that there's no buy-in fee getting back later on. This is, we're not a voting member, but that we have, we have the rights to expect favorable rates over the, you know, long-term period, and that would be part of the negotiations.
I'm, I'm concerned about Jawa. One, because we are not going to have a vote, but most importantly, because of the city of Chicago. So, right now, and it's one of your, your assumptions, it's in your notes, and we all understand, that the city of Chicago has certain limitations on what it charges today. But again, and I hate to repeat myself, but the city of Chicago has repeatedly demonstrated an inability to, to handle its finances in a, in a, a good way. And so, my concern is that later on down the road, the city's going to decide, oh, well, we need to really increase the rates. And then, all of a sudden, the costs that you have projected are no longer as valid because Chicago doesn't have its act to go.
I don't disagree any of the things that you said. I, I will say that we raised this issue with Jawa, and their response is that it's in their best interest as well to always make sure that the costs that they're being passed on, and they're looking at other alternatives, as we've mentioned, to make sure that if the city continues to raise the rates beyond something sustainable, that they have explored with other Jawas, alternative Lake Michigan water sources. But, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I...
Glad you read the notes, the assumptions.
And I can understand Jawa's position, but I would also tend to think that, you know, the city can make its own decision.
One of the earlier, one of your slide presentations, page seven, we made the comment that allowing the remaining useful life of wells was perhaps with the joint program. Can you explain that a little bit more? I mean, perhaps, what options do we have? Because I, like Trustee Ranky, I'm thinking that, yes, it'd be nice to have a ace in the hole if, if basically the city of Chicago keeps raising the rates. We could, in fact, if we have the wells maintained and useful, say, we're going back to the wells until we do something else. And I'm just wondering if that's what that means, if that's what perhaps means.
What we were looking at is, on the phased-in, whether or not you would want to keep some of these, if you went, and even after you phased out utilization on a daily basis of the wells, that you would want to keep those in, in play. You have an investment, and certainly, I think the professionals in the group would agree, you would want to keep them around just to make sure that your system is operating correctly all the time, and you would not want it to say, all right, today, we're shutting them all down. And I think that's what we're referring to. We would want to have the ability to operate the system over a long period of time before we phased them out. But depending on how the agreement with Jawa's written, that's, that's certainly a, an option that you could go back to if necessary.
Well, I think it's important that we definitely get 100 percent softened water for our residents. I think that's extremely important. I think there are a number of residents that I hear from, and they do not like the quality, and I think it pertains to softening, you know, and I don't know if you can touch base a little bit, or talk about what softening, if you don't soften your water, what could happen?
Well, if you don't soften the water, it's going to be tasting, as everybody knows, harsh and different than what most people that live in the suburbs are accustomed to. And so, I think that that will be continuing to be something, and that's the reason why many of us that have wells revert to a water softener-type system to, in some cases, they have a filtration system as well, so that is bundled as one, and it certainly would increase that dollar amount that we indicated up there earlier.
Now, as far as, I think it was, what, $12.8 million to soften water for our three wells?
It's 5.5, but 12.8 was the cost of also, eventually, let me pull that out, that's also including the cost of making the capital improvements that you defer beyond 2019.
If we keep, because obviously, softening the three wells is a substantial investment. If we keep it longer than 10 years, 15 or 20 years, will, will the price come down per thousand gallons?
That, the, if you continue to extend out the, the wells, as we said early on, you have uncertainties in the quality of the water and the additional treatment processes that may be necessitated by the quality of the water by the, from the, imposed on you by the regulatory agencies, if that makes sense. So, starting, when you start going out, these wells are not, do not have a 500-year life. Some of those, if you recall from the original stuff, was, you know, you have some older wells, and so, there's lots of uncertainties, and if you have to drill, drill a new well... wells, and so there's lots of uncertainties, and if you have to drill a new well, it gets pretty expensive. So, you know, that's, those are, there's more uncertainties as you move forward in the out-years with using the wells.
Thank you.
Even with the well softening.
Jeff, with two different organizations here, does it get pretty complicated billing-wise, or, I mean, I just don't understand how that all works, that we just get one giant bill from Jawa and one giant bill from, from, and we meld them together?
Yeah, it would be pretty straightforward, simple. We reconcile what we purchase each month.
We reconcile right now with Elgin what we purchase each month with the water department, and then we just pay it. So it would be pretty, I would assume it would be very similar with Jawa.
And when they're adjusting their rates, because it's two entities, we kind of have to figure out, you know, what the new formula is?
Yeah, right now, we do that to some degree because we have the contract with Elgin. So it's, it's pretty straightforward, to be honest with you. I wouldn't see that as being a problem.
I don't think long-range it would be a problem, but I think, speaking particularly to the issue of Trustee Hopkins about the necessity for softening and softening as fast as possible, I think we would have the ability to move more quickly with 100% Elgin. We have a long-term relationship with them, it's one contract, we only have one system that we're having to expand to get online, and so I think for rapidity of this improvement, we might be better off, and long-range, with just one supplier.
Does our emergency come from Elgin now, or where is it coming from?
We have an emergency connection with.
Streamway?
No, they want to do one with Streamwood, and we're going to do that, but we don't have it yet. It's Elgin.
Yeah, really, it's with Elgin. We have a, location, where's, where's it, on West Bartlett? There's a connection on West Bartlett, but we were looking at Streamwood and Hanover Park for long-term emergency connections.
And then just to remind you, and we've gone through the pros and cons relative to the city of Chicago, Jawa's contract is up with Chicago in nine years, I think, and, you know, they have a lot of plans, and I think they've been very proactive in thinking about where they might be able to get Chicago water from another town, not necessarily to have to redo that contract, but, but having that unknown so close, I find a little problematic.
How many communities are part of Jawa?
I beg your pardon?
How many communities are part of Jawa?
Oh, what is it?
I think it's eight.
Number of communities that are part of Jawa?
Seven right now.
Okay.
Seven.
And is there any other community? Are all those communities voting?
Yes. They're all original members, bought in early.
Let me ask you about the 100% Elgin option with the second connection built up front. You may have, you may have gone over this, and I may have lost this detail. In terms, my big concern is redundancy. So if there is a problem with Elgin as a source, we would reserve two or three wells? Because, because obviously, there's, there's an annual cost to maintain those wells, and then if the regulations change, it's going to be even more expensive. But are the wells an economically viable option to back up the Elgin if we went 100% Elgin?
In the short term, yes. If you went there, you could still continue to keep, and we would do those three wells, keep them live for a period of time, not only to provide stability of the operation, make sure you got adequate pressure to everybody in the system, but that would be also to get some useful life out of your, the treatment processes that you have.
So then, over time, we would see the wells shutting down, and then we would rely for our backup on our interconnects with Streamwood or wherever we end up connecting to?
Right.
Yes, and we're recommending, if you recall, that as a best practice, the connections to Streamwood and Hanover Park, regard, for all the options, and I don't want to bore you, waste your time, we included that as the same for every one of the options, as well as additional water storage facilities that would provide you additional levels of protection. Those are incorporated in each one of the options.
And you previously testified that the water quality from Elgin and the water quality from, I'm sorry.
I know.
But you previously told us that the water, quantitatively, the water from Elgin and the water from Jawa is essentially the same.
The water quality reports, when you take a look at it, there's nuanced areas. It may taste different, but the water quality reports both entities have provided are comparable and have high-quality characteristics.
Okay, and then it seems like over the, both the short term and the long term, the risk of, risk associated with cost, to me, seems minimal, reduced with the 100% Elgin option, and we get soft water faster. So in terms of building the consensus, I'm a big fan of the 100% Elgin with that second connection built up front. I think it just seems to make the most sense for us.
I think you're right. Now, let's say this happened in, let's say, a year's time, would we still have residents getting non-softened water?
There's a phased-in, I mean, first of all, as we've described, if you went this way, you would immediately upgrade the existing connection and get almost 3 million gallons. You'd be getting for a period of time well-watered till you, till your contract in 2019, or depending on how quickly we can get through. Because we, some, the new pumping station will be constructed within Elgin, and also we have to do a lot of water work, connections up to Elgin. So eventually, everybody would get softened water, but there would be a period of time where you would still have, before you get that second connection. But if you're doing it by 2019, everybody would have softened water, okay? By 2019. It's 2016, the engineer, everybody agree that in three years, it's, be able to put that much water main in?
Everybody indicating yes. It's just a nice thing to see.
The only thing is, more water softeners. We believe that we understand where we're connecting. We don't know, no one here knows what Elgin's sewer system that we have to avoid in the water lane, but we've been, we believe that that's achievable, and that's what we assume in the 2019, all in.
Should be pretty easy to connect to Elgin's water, they're just at Naperville and 20, aren't they?
It's not the proximity of the connection, but it's the, in fact, we've got to get a big line, and we've got to tap into a line that can supply us, so we've got to go inside the community, and it's just, we can't have it right next to the existing one, because we have to pressurize our system differently. So there's some challenges, but they're all, they're overcome by, and we've worked with their staff in the past to identify those improvements.
How long have we had our water contracted with Elgin? How many, how many years have we been contracted with Elgin for our water?
Since 84, yeah, 1984.
So it'll be 35 years in 2019.
Right.
What's the timeframe for softening our existing wells? How long's it take to do that?
For the $5.5 million expenditure, that option?
Can't just go sprinkle some salt in there like I do?
It's not a cartridge, it would be nine months.
You don't need to have to deal with those bags.
A year, I think a year. A year would be, you know, because it's probably not going to be something they can just take off the shelf, we're not going to be able to get it at Home Depot, it would be a specialty-type item, and have to be fit in to the, the system itself, the pumping station and wells. Everybody agree with that? Years achievable?
A year.
I'm seeing three heads nodding yes.
So if the board's leaning 100% Elgin, would it make sense to get the water softened as quickly as possible, use our wells, and then transition over a longer period of time to 100% Elgin?
I think if, you know, they sit down and they negotiate, and it makes sense to do that.
But are we wasting money softening those wells if we then cut them off?
Yes.
Right. Yep. We are. All right.
Any other comments that other board members would like to make?
I like the redundancy, the ability to have two separate sources with Elgin and Jawa, but I also like the potential, what's the best word to use, the ability to deal with somebody familiar with 100% Elgin. So I think that's what we have to weigh. And I don't know that there's any other information that we can ask for. I mean, this has been so thorough, over and over.
Do we have one other question? There's a note here that says we have a grant that we have to use. We also have another amount of money that was given to us for a seventh well or an eighth well out west that we never, we never drilled?
No, that's, that's the same thing, that's a grant. We got a US EPA grant for half million?
Roughly.
Yeah, half million for that well, and we were able to get the US EPA to agree to let us repurpose that on another project, this water project. They have been calling lately and saying, we've been very patient, we would like you to pick a project. I think that's a fair summary.
Nice way of saying it. Okay.
Is there, is there any, is there any risk in softening the water? I'm thinking of, you know, peanut kids and, and the like. Is there any, are there any health issues in softening water for everyone?
None that any of us are aware of. It's pretty common throughout the region for communities that have well water, and even those of us that have private, have private wells on our homes, I think you'll find the majority of the people have softened water.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have the ability to increase our supply from Elgin right now?
A little bit. I mean, we have an upside number that we can't pass, but we, you know, flow pretty well underneath it. We could increase it a little bit, but not a whole lot, I don't think.
Enough to go down to like maybe one of our wells, or no?
That would probably be tough. Right now, we take roughly 2 million gallons a day. With the existing pump station, we believe we can probably get close to that 2.75, which drops that multiplier with.
Right.
Existing station as is, without the upgrade that's necessary, but that's pushing it, and that might get rid of a well, but, I mean, we wouldn't be able to get.
Our total consumption daily now is what, on average?
Roughly.
3.2 million.
3.2. So we're getting two right now, so.
If I could make a comment to your question. The question about getting rid of the wells, the big thing is the distribution of the water. The entry point is way at the northwest corner of town. To push it all the way to the southeast corner of town is tough, keep chlorine residuals and what have you. So that's why, if you're asking, if you can get rid of certain wells, we may have to keep them just because they're centrally located.
Gotcha.
And then if I could make one other comment on softening, not only do you have the upfront capital costs, you would also have sludge. It creates a sludge, which you have to deal with, and then we'd actually, in a domino effect, we'd be possibly taxing the wastewater plant with our discharge. That's just another thing to think about. It's much better to buy softened water than, than to, I think, to soften it in-house, just because there are, like I said, besides the upfront costs, there are logistics.
Good to know. I would say that we move on to another decision on, what I'm hearing anyway, is 100% Elgin and 50/50, we can get rid of the 100% Jawa, right?
Right.
And maybe everybody do a little more research, do a little more thinking on this, right, and come back to a board, board meeting.
All right.
We're another, I have one other question. I read somewhere that 85% of our water is billed, or your numbers are based on 85%. Is that what we currently have in Bartlett right now?
We're talking about the, the water loss that is traditional, that you, and so, everybody, every community is not able to bill every drop of water that comes into that community. You're using it for different municipal purposes, for flushing hydrants, as an example, and then there's just plain water loss. So to be conservative, we're saying that if you bought 100 gallons, you're able to only sell 85 gallons of water. And so I think that's usually the, an average number based on the traditional water losses that communities in Northeastern only have.
That's, yeah, that's conservative. I think our number's a lot higher than that, isn't it, gentlemen?
Our unadjusted is about 86% of them by the time factoring water loss and flushing water every week, pretty much about 92.
We have a pretty efficient system then.
We do.
I should restate that. Is anybody interested in dealing with Jawa?
No.
Well, then, let's just.
I thought it was a good option. I mean, I.
Looks like you're going to outvote it, I'm sorry.
I'm not opposed to 100% Elgin, but I like the option of having the duplicity, the extra, the extra source of water other than the Fox River.
And then, do you say that Mike's the only one? Trustee Cameron, I'm sorry. Then I would suggest we ask staff to go and negotiate a contract with Elgin and get it firmed up for 100%.
We can do that as quickly as possible.
One last question for Dr. Burke. Out of, out of the seven members of Jawa, is Harvey still a voting member?
No, you would not be, you would be the eighth person, eighth entity getting water, but you would not be a voting member.
Is the city of Harvey still a voting member?
The city of Harvey is, in that particular case, they're not a member of this Jawa, they're a member of other entities, but in this case, it's just the northwest suburban corridor.
Okay.
That is a member of that Jawa. And there's lots of entities that call themselves Jawa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Are we clear?
We are clear, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Burke, for all of your hard work on the numbers over numbers, and the inside numbers and the outside numbers, but we really appreciate all the work.
We greatly appreciate the opportunity to work with you.
Thank you. When do you think we'll hear back on your negotiations with Elgin?
That's a good question.
Tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
I would like to see it done within, you know, a couple of months.
Okay.
And also, if we could, it's premature, but can we find out if our current disposal pick up, will pick up the water softeners that we'll be tossing out?
Start talking to them about that.
Does that stand a motion to adjourn?
Second.
By trustee Cameron, second by trustee Ahrens, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Ahrens?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Arbenaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.